I call the meeting to order. The agenda this evening starts with visitors, followed by approval of the minutes, update on early childhood education, the initial discussion this evening on the fiscal '09 budget, approval of superintendent evaluation tool, school committee goals, Massachusetts School Building Authority update, and then other matters. Are there any visitors this evening? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Andres Navarro, my name is Bruce. If you would care to receive this, that would be great. And if you could attach it to the minutes, that would be very good. Thank you, sir.
I think we are short one copy, but don't worry about it.
All right, sir, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. I notice while looking at the minutes that the section about visitors mentions that Mr. Hector Ballon addressed the committee, and I'm reading. He read a statement regarding the issue of conduct and responsibilities of citizens at regular meetings.
Can you tell us where you are, sir? Whereabouts on the page right now?
We're on page one, paragraph number 1, 2, 3, 4, if you count the information on the top.
On the minutes.
The second paragraph in the visitors section.
Wait a minute.
Minutes.
Is this the one which you just gave us, sir?
No, no, sir. That's information, that's a transcript of other meetings, but what I wanted to address today was this second paragraph.
What are we looking at, please?
I'm confused, sir. I apologize.
In the draft minutes to be approved.
Thank you.
I thought when you handed us this, this was a statement you were going to read, sir. Okay, go ahead. Now, I'm with you.
Probably the first word in that page is transcript, and probably was not going to be a statement. So I'll read that paragraph, and if you give me a little bit of time. "He read a statement regarding the issue of conduct and responsibilities of citizens at regular meetings being placed on the agenda at his request at the November 5, 2007 meeting." I recall that Mr. Harrington made a statement regarding Mr. Ballon asking to be placed on the agenda, and that was questioned at the time. The chairman at that time, on November 5, chose not to answer. Following the meeting, at the following meeting on November 19, Mr. Ballon confronted the chairman with the fact that he had not asked for this, Mr. Ballon's position, and he said that the chairman had lied. The newspaper has reported this, and all these opportunities are opportunities for Mr. --
Wait a minute. Could you stop for a minute? I think lied is a pretty strong --
You want me to stop my timer?
No, no. Stop, Andres. Lied is a pretty strong word. It's not that he lied. Maybe he said a different word. That's not lying, and I take exception with that. I really do.
Martha, let me just clarify the record. My written statement, my written statement, which was attached to the minutes and which was distributed to the public, said that I put it on, Hector and I discussed it, and I put it on. As I was introducing the topic, I made the misspeak of saying it was at his request as opposed to for him. When Mr. Ballon and I went back and forth, back and forth, back and forth on email, I graciously, in respect for him, said I would put it on the agenda for us to discuss. I am sorry if during a meeting of three hours, I may have made a mistake. My written statement was clear, and it was given to the public, and the minutes can be reflected. But we have not talked about the minutes yet this evening, sir.
Thank you, sir. And that's my concern, because in May of this year, in May 18 of this year, during the Policy Review Committee, there was a discussion about what should be in the minutes, and that it was Mr. Hardy's point, and Mr. Harrington agreed emphatically with him that the minutes should reflect the flavor of the discussion, and that in five years from now, people coming back to the minutes will be able to get the flavor of the discussion.
Sir, I've already said we'll correct the minutes.
Thank you, sir.
We don't need to dwell on it.
Beautiful. So that, and I think that would be consistent with some of the statements --
We don't need to dwell on it, sir. They'll be corrected.
I need to, sir, you have said both that you have, my veracity is not in question, but you've also told me that it's not correct and not true. So that's why I just want to bring the evidence.
You made your statement, and I acknowledged it. We said we're going to correct the minutes. Now, if you have something else to add, add it. Otherwise, we have a full agenda this evening of important things, more important than that, to get done this evening. So what else would you like to add, sir?
I would like to add, sir, that you graciously, I'm sorry, that would have been my timer for four minutes and 20 seconds. Thank you. And I only have 40 seconds left, because I want to be responsible. However, when the chairman says that he graciously agreed to this, what he doesn't say is that he called Mr. Ballon petty, which is inconsistent with his gracious and respectful attitude. We just want to be able to understand those persons.
Sir, Mr. Ballon has issued a 20-page memo with all the emails back and forth to everybody on the committee, and he can release it to the newspaper if he wants. I have no problem with the public seeing the nonsense that FEO is putting forth night after night after night. Thank you, sir.
We have put it on the web, sir. It's available right now.
I understand it's on the web. I understand it's on Yahoo.com. I understand it's on YouTube. So thank you very much. Thank you very much. Are there any other comments from anyone else this evening? Being none, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Wendy, in the second paragraph under visitors, can we correct it to read that the item was placed on the agenda at the request of the chairman after discussion with Mr. Ballon? Are there any other corrections on the minutes? Do I have a motion to approve that? Motion by Martha, second by Katie. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Chris, the next item on the agenda is an update on early childhood educa -- I'm sorry.
May I ask just a, I wanted to wait until after we voted, but I have just a clarifying question.
Sure.
Will we be putting the job description in the policy? I thought we had said that's going to be a true, I have no problem with the way it was reworded, but just for my own clarification, we're not going to leave that description in the policy manual when it's, are we, is our intent to have that in as part of the policy, or are we going to update and leave that separate?
I think we were going to discuss that at the policy meeting we have on the 18th and make a decision that --
That's what I thought we were going to do.
That's what we said with Tim Hardy when we --
Thank you for changing that.
Okay.
That policy was in the policy book.
Right.
Originally, so there's no reason why, yeah.
That's what I wanted to, just to clarify. Thank you.
Chris, any further to you?
Thank you. Tonight, we have an update on early childhood education, and we have two people with us tonight who are intimately involved in the education of our youngest students in the Foxborough Public Schools. But before I introduce them, I want to announce something that I learned this morning. Cindy Brunelli, our Director of Special Education, has decided to retire at the end of the school year, and when she announced that to me this morning, I said, Cindy, this is a great opportunity. You're at the school committee meeting tonight and a couple of agenda items, and I want to publicly thank you for the work that you've accomplished here in Foxborough. I want to thank you for the work that you've done with me as I've transitioned into the school system and helping me to learn much about special education in this school system. And I think I can share the school committee's regard for the work that you've accomplished here. So this was something that, quite frankly, Cindy and I have been talking about a little bit during the year. I mentioned that in my former role with the Superintendent's Association, I'd counseled a lot of people about retirement, and even though I think I know a lot about it, I know I'll struggle with it as everyone struggles with it when they finally get down to their own personal decision to make. But Cindy has a bright horizon ahead. She's already been selected by the Department of Education to help to lead some statewide efforts in special education. She heard about that last week and has quite a few other opportunities. And so Cindy, congratulations. Thank you. I very much appreciate the work that you've done.
Chris, I would just like to echo that Cindy and I have had a couple of conversations, not very many, but a couple, and I've tried to share with her that I think she has one of the most difficult jobs that we have in the district, because you're working with a situation where you're trying to balance the needs of the student with the needs of the district, and you're trying to match what's right for both. Sometimes, when parents think one thing is right, and you think something different, it can become very contentious, and so I know it's a very difficult job. I also know from my fellow board members in the past how difficult it is to find people that are really trained in the field that you're trained in, and so I know we're going to have a hard time finding a replacement, but I wish you the very, very best of luck. I thank you for all your hard years of service and for the differences you've made in the lives of many students.
Thank you very much. Decision is sort of bittersweet, but I know that it's the right decision at this point. And as Dr. Martis has said, it's a difficult decision, but once you've made it, then you can look forward to other opportunities, and I look forward to those opportunities. And I thank the committee and I thank the district for giving me the tools in order to be able to be ready for that next phase of my professional life. So I leave with a smile on my face, and thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, let me introduce both Cindy and we have someone new to the administrative team this year. Many of you, I think, probably know Diana Parra as a terrific early childhood teacher, and the committee wisely funded a half-time early childhood coordinator position in this present budget for the first time, and we're trying to figure out when.
Recent memory.
Recent memory. And so I thought it would make a great deal of sense at this time of the year to have an update on early childhood, early childhood education. So both Diana Parra, early childhood coordinator, and Cindy Brunelli, our Director of Special Ed, are here tonight, and I'll turn it over to both of you. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I'd like to start a little bit. As Dr. Martis has said, Diana has been a preschool teacher here in the district for the past seven years. She has been the .5 early childhood coordinator for the past three months, and I must tell you that it's been a very busy three months and a very productive three months on her part, and I will let her share with you some of the endeavors that she's undertaken very enthusiastically, but I just wanted to share with you a little bit about the fact that I'm grateful for your support with regard to actually helping us to create the position, and secondly, that it is a position that is bigger than a .5, but Diane is actually doing a magnificent job. She's taken on the monumental task of trying to bridge the gap between early intervention, which is where our little babies are actually getting their services before they enter public school, and building a bridge for not only the kids, but for the parents as well, so that we have a smooth entrance into the public school. And that's not an easy thing for children as well as parents to walk over. It's a difficult transition, and yet Diana has actually done some nice things, and she'll share with you in order to help in that regard. She's also done a really nice drive just recently, getting involved with staff development, which is one of her responsibilities in the position as early childhood coordinator, and I really want her to share with you also today's events, because she did, in fact, venture into the staff development world today, and I think with very positive results. She's also going to be, I think, very instrumental and very helpful with regard to our possible full-day kindergarten endeavor, because in fact, she will in fact need to represent the needs of the special ed kids when we move in that direction. So I'm sure that you have lots of questions with regard to the preschool program, because it's different, and Diana would probably be the best person to sort of give you sort of a little overview of the lay of the land with regard to what goes on up there. So Diana, if you want to just kind of give them a quick --
I thank you all for actually funding the position. It's been a lot of years of the entire preschool staff wearing many, 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 many hats. That's all teachers do. And one of the biggest extras in the teaching position in the preschool level has been that transition from early childhood intervention centers to bringing those needy kids into our district. And some of them end up being with the district for 17 years, and so fostering those relationships early on is really key. And that responsibility was left to the preschool teachers as well as teaching full-time curriculum and all that stuff. And we had to leave the classroom to go out, which meant time away from providing services in the classroom, to go visit the families and visit the children and test and evaluate and assess and determine level of need, and then prepare for transition in. So funding this position for a half-time has really allowed me to have the time available, not taking any time away from the classroom, going out to see those kids in the early childhood settings that they're in. It's been very difficult to shut that hat off at 11:30 and move into the preschool, because as Cindy mentioned, it is a position that down the road, it is a bigger job, and there are more pieces to it than just that early childhood. But that has been a big goal of mine, to make that a smooth transition for families entering and develop those nice relationships, letting families know that going from the in-home interactions with early intervention, transitioning to the now it's a school setting, it's important to have a bridge there that wasn't there before. I did a staff development day today, which is another difficult position for the preschool teachers, because we aren't on the same curriculum, because it is a special education setting. We're not exactly included in what the rest of the district is working on, simply by what's offered in some of the curriculum areas. And so we're looking at and thinking of full-day kindergarten and our kids transitioning and what their needs would be for next year and the years to come, how to link those Think Math programs that we've developed, and to work on that in a developmentally appropriate way at the preschool level, so that we're all on the same page. So we had a really productive first workshop for preschool, where everybody felt like it was really relevant to what we actually do. We had some kindergarten classroom assistants available too, to shed light on what actually happens in the kindergarten. I did some observations prior to that to actually see the different Think Math lessons. And then we had a nice brainstorming session and practice and developed some nice prerequisite skills that the preschool will all work on together in terms of those developmental things that need to be in place before kindergarten.
And that was only one session, so I'm encouraged and look forward to many more of those. Diane also has an idea for an open house, four parents entering into the public school for the first time. Oftentimes, early intervention offers open houses for parents so that they can become accustomed to what might be ahead for them in leaving early intervention, and Diana had a great idea as to promoting the fact that they're coming to us for the first time, so let's have an open house, let's prepare the parents for what's ahead here. So that's something that she's going to be spending some time developing over the next few months, and we hope to do that in the spring. Do you have any questions for Diana?
Let me start with the committee. Katie?
I remember when my children attended the preschool program project early. Is it still accredited? Is it an accredited program, the preschool program?
We have been accredited, and this year, we decided to put it on hold. There was many, many changes in lots of different districts that were involved in that. The changes were so big and so administrative that we put it on hold, and we're researching at this point.
Okay. We're still in the self-study stage of the accreditation, which means that in fact, we will move forward, however, we're sort of stepping back, taking a few breaths before we want to plunge ahead into the, because it is a very involved process, and we want to do it right, and so rather than to just jump into it and just sort of piecemeal it together, we've decided to wait and apply for accreditation next year.
I didn't know if that, if being accredited allowed you, you know, certain funding that normally maybe you wouldn't receive, or is that part of it?
Not necessarily. There is some, there are some grant opportunities that have just now become available to accredited programs, and that is in fact something that we will be looking into next year, when in fact, we follow the process.
I actually support their idea to wait, because it was just last January that the new accreditation process was rolled out, and it is quite the monster. I have some, unfortunately, more familiarity with it than I'd like. They really do have to work some glitches out, because it's not really designed for public preschool kindergarten programs. It's really designed for private daycare and private preschools. So they have a lot, they enlarge the process five times over, and then a lot of it is still minutia that really doesn't pertain to public school programs, so I'd like to wait --
And special education.
And special education.
Which is a big piece of what we have.
I'd like to wait and see if they can work some of those early kinks out. You know, when accreditation process expands, usually they then rein it back in a little bit based on the outcry. So I think it's a good idea to wait, and it's great to be --
I just ---- of reining that back in.
Well, they've certainly got a lot of public comment about it, because our Department of Ed requires that accreditation for full-day kindergarten programs if you apply for that grant, so that's how I am familiar with it. It's the same accreditation for early childhood programs. So the problem is, our Department of Ed has required that accreditation for full-day kindergarten programs, but it's such a monster that they're trying to work with the national organization to maybe have something a little more apropos of the program. So I think, let's wait a year. It may be the same, but I think it would be a bad idea to wait. So I think we had a very brief conversation. I thought that was a good idea.
Correct, and we're still very much involved in the process. We still get updates. We still go to meetings. We're still informed. However, as Debbie has said, there are still some kinks that need to be ironed out to make it a little bit more user-friendly for public schools, and we're hoping that just to step back and give them time and to give us time might in fact be much more beneficial for us in the long run. So that's what we've decided to do.
Honestly, I just thought of it, because I know in the past, when you were, it was something that was announced, and you didn't say that during your presentation, so that's why it was really curiosity. But it sounds like you're doing a wonderful job. I mean, it sounds like, said, there's obviously so many families I'm sure you're reaching, and that, given the resources, you could probably extend that. So it sounds like you've done a lot in three months.
She certainly has.
Kate, did you have questions or comments?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, Diane, I think it would be very helpful for both us and the audience here and at home. In a time of, we've seen class enrollments actually go down, they've been increasing at the preschool level, and I know you certainly feel that. We were able to fund only half that position, and I know at some point, you're going to come back to us and make the case for more than that. But I know from the time when my children attended it, the program has grown tenfold. Could you speak to that? Because I think that would be very helpful to give all of us that perspective, I think.
We are in a time where early diagnosis is happening. I don't know if it's that there are more children with specific issues, or if we've gotten better at identifying the needs earlier and interventions that we can provide to make kids more successful. The autism PVD diagnosis is very, very prevalent now and growing, and where we didn't have to even seven years ago, when I came, we didn't have that many children on the spectrum. And I think you're seeing early, early detection, early diagnosis, and maybe more children that actually are on that spectrum. I think there's a discrepancy in terms of families and doctors wanting the appropriate treatment for the kids, an intervention for the kids early, and so they're diagnosing kids earlier and making recommendations of full-day, full-year, all the therapies, and I think that's a big contributor to why we're seeing such an increase in numbers.
And it's the law. I mean, if somebody is diagnosed and needed services, then we own them from the time that they're three, not five.
Right. And the other piece to them turning three is kids turn three all year long.
That's right.
So it's not that we're just going to see an increase in September. Okay, we have our numbers. I'm starting children from, you know, in September, and I started kids last week, and I'll be starting new kids next week, and I have a list of 11 more children that I already know about that will need services between now and September. So, and those are the kids we know about.
How many students do you currently have, between the total and then the early intervention piece or the preschool piece?
I think we're servicing about 48 children.
Like 90 kids on the count?
Forty-eight now? Forty-eight children on ed plans, and --
Ninety altogether.
Ninety altogether.
Forty-eight ed plans?
Yeah. And they're being serviced in a variety of ways. They might just be coming in for itinerant services, which would mean the families bring them in, and they get speech, therapy. Some kids have more services that they require, and they're in a classroom. It might be a two-day spot, it might be a three-day spot, it might be a five-day spot, it might be all day.
Most of the spectrum of services.
It might be all day, every day. So depending on the individualized needs of each child, and we do look at the cases on an individual basis and place them.
And Diana said something really important that I don't think people actually understand or realize, that in fact, we are responsible for educating preschoolers when they turn three years old, not at the beginning of the year, but when they turn three years old. And that's why it's so very important to have someone like Diana who can actually coordinate that, so that we can be proactive, both programmatically as well as fiscally, so that we can do a better job of planning ahead. If we know they're coming, then we can in fact plan for them.
And one of the things that's happened already this year is, we also do an outreach, and parents are aware that if you're having difficulty, if your child's having difficulties, you can call the school and request your child to be screened, and then we would determine whether they needed an evaluation. When I speak about early intervention, those are the children that we already know about. We've run three screenings with three to four kids. September, we didn't refer anybody. October and November, we've referred several kids. Those are the kids we did not know about. And I have some kids that come in at four, and the parents say, my child has no language. And so there's no, and we didn't, they didn't get any prior services, and so they're coming in at all different times throughout the year.
Can I, just, I just want to pick up on that point, because I think it's an enormously important one, and that is, the earlier we identify students in Foxborough, the better off their success will be in the school system, and I worry that we have families that don't know that we have a program such as this, and I think the role that you now provide, the role that you have now, I hope we can take some data, given that we're looking a lot of data, we could take some data and say, last year at this time, or two years ago, how many students had we identified or had identified themselves from the summer to now, or the summer until the end of this year, so a six-month screen? And then what have you been able to do in the position, because we have this position, to be able to say, this is, we're identifying these students, we're figuring out the range of needs that they have. The whole autism spectrum is exploding on us nationally, as we know. I think the most recent research is, the earlier we identify, the better off we're going to be, students are going to be, and their families are going to be. So I think that it would be interesting as we continue to look at that position, to be able to say, here's what we're able to do, here's some of the stories we can tell, and here's the data that we see that will allow us to better evaluate how this is going.
We actually just invested in a new survey that will speak to the children's progress from the time that we get them, how they look in the school setting, how they look in the home setting, and how they look in the community in terms of whether they're in daycare settings, or at-home childcare, or playgroups outside the school, and kind of track -- of tracking progress that way. And I think the survey goes every six months, so we evaluate.
You mentioned you know of it.
One second, Deb. Kate, were you done?
Oh, yeah. Don't, Grandma, I'm very sorry.
That's all right. I just wanted to make sure she was done.
You mentioned that you know of at least 11 more coming in through September. Are we responsible for them July and August?
Depending on their need. Depending on their need. And not all of those 11 definitely will qualify for special education services. But that's part of the whole process. And one of the other things that's tricky, is going to be tricky for us financially, is that early interventions are now changing their process in terms of how they let us know about kids. And they're going to be giving us less information. Yeah.
Why is that?
Why?
They're giving the parents opportunity to opt in or opt out to releasing names, which makes it also difficult because sometimes families are hoping that the kids do better and that won't need the school. So some families you get that come right away and want to give you the information right up and be proactive.
And get them.
And other families, all kind of.
Most have, you can't get the child.
Yeah. Saying, I don't want to stigmatize them. I don't want to put a label on them. And let's see, you know, where we get before we get to that point. And then so we might have a kid turning three that we didn't know was as needy or that was even out there that has been receiving services. So it's tricky.
It's a huge area now that we really and truly do need to do a better job.
Anything else?
I'm stressing.
I think, you know, working in the field of obstetrics and gynecology and seeing a lot of young parents with one, two, three children, I have to honest to tell you, probably five or 10 years ago, when a parent came into the office with two or three children and one was really acting inappropriately or, you know, you get so you know these parents and these families. And I have to be honest with you, I'm probably a lot more proactive than I've ever been as far as saying, do you think there's a problem here? And you should talk to pediatrician, you should have this child tested, you know, and making them more aware. I would love to see us be a lot more proactive with our elementary school newsletters and put in some sort of a, did you know or are you concerned type of thing. So that, you know, I had five kids, and I have to tell you that you have five different kids, and there's something unique about each one of them. But that doesn't mean there isn't a problem. And I think we need to be able to help people to identify without putting that stigmatism in them. And I know on a very personal level that if it wasn't for this system and what they offered my grandson, he would not be functioning at the level he's functioning at. So it takes, it does take a vote, but I think we need more in the way of awareness, more than anything else, because nobody wants to admit that maybe there's a problem or there's a concern there. But you do such a disservice to the child because the child needs the services now. Because whatever you lose, it's very hard to recapture. And I think that's the type of thing that we need to be able to tell young parents or any parent that if you have any concerns, please come to us. Let us help you in whatever direction we can. And I think by being more proactive and not pointing fingers and saying, you know, probably a child that misbehaves the most is because they can't communicate. And I think if we could outline some of this in our newsletters when we send out, you know, to the parents a monthly letters, that it would make them clue in a little bit. You know, nobody wants to think that they just have a child that's just misbehaving all the time. It's usually a communication problem. And once you can communicate with their child, their world turns around and so doesn't yours. So I think we need to be a lot more proactive when it comes to this. So maybe if we could come up with something in the monthly newsletter, you know, is your child doing this? Are you concerned? And not in a finger pointing way, but in a very sincere, we want to help type of way. And I think we can probably get across to a lot more parents. And it's to everybody's advantage because you don't want to see a child so far behind when they start that the problem's already there. And it's monumental for all of us to try and turn around. So whatever it's worth, I'd love to see us do something like that.
And that's easily doable.
Absolutely.
I saw Chris take notes, so we can do that. And since there are three people sitting behind them that can help us make that happen, I think they took notes too.
Newsletter people.
Absolutely.
No, I think we can make some progress in that time. Any other comments from the committee? Well, thank you very much for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work you're doing.
The next item on the budget, the next item on the agenda is the budget. I think we're going to start with an overview of Chris, and then we'll have our principals. They're bosom-walking the clock now if they'd like the table, but I'll turn it over to Chris.
Okay, thank you. This begins in a, in a public way, the FY09 budget process. And as I think the committee knows from having the presentation, I need to stress that the, this is the preliminary FY09 budget. And it's, I think it's very important to say that, and I'm sure that I'll repeat it during this presentation, because this is the first look at the budget. And the first area is really addressing what, the request addresses the following areas.
Chris, just before you get to that, one of the things that you and I talked about, and I see it, it's in your cover note here.
Yes.
That I just want to emphasize to the public.
Okay.
Is that we spent a lot of time before you came on our strategic plan and our district improvement plans. And one of the things we've talked about is trying to align the budgets and the finances to the district improvement plans and the strategic plans and trying to get this stuff all aligned. And you've acknowledged in your summary, I just want to drive home to the public, that you are well aware of the strategic plan and the district improvement plans, and what you're going to propose to us tonight integrates where we're trying to go with those and provides the financial support to achieve those. Is that correct?
That is correct. And I appreciate you saying that. I didn't, I know that people have that cover, the cover letter that I, that I put together on that. And it does blend the strategic plan and the district improvement plan. It really addresses the areas that are on this slide because we know how important curriculum work has been over the last year, the commitment that the school committee and the public and the administrators have made, in particular the teachers with implementing new programs in English Language Arts and Mathematics. This budget funds those curriculum updates. It maintains reasonable class size, something that we are continuing to analyze. We have our middle school and high school principals coming next week, and they'll give a more detailed analysis. And I know Kate had mentioned that at the last meeting. But since they're coming on the budget next week, it just makes sense for them to, to move that in terms of the budget process, but also give an analysis of, of class size. But it does maintain that reasonable class size. I think we've been proud of that, and we're proud of it this year certainly. Cindy Brunelli will be back tonight to talk about special education. And this budget in FY09, next year's budget, funds those special education requirements that we have specifically in areas, and I'll talk about them when we talk about numbers, but specifically in areas, tuitions, out-of-district tuitions, transportation costs and therapies. So we have funded that. Adequate supplies and materials, something that I know the elementary principals, when they discuss some of the areas that they're looking at in the budgets, they'll be looking at, at that as well. But it gives that supply and material accounts, making sure that that is adequate in order to deliver what we know we need to deliver educationally. And then we have some staffing changes, both in staffing in and leadership, which I think will continue to strengthen our art and music departments, two areas that we've been very proud of, and we want to continue to make sure that they stay strong. So that, those are the areas. Just to give the public and the committee a little bit of an overview of the process that we've used to date, we've requested areas in both school and programs so that we could see what our departments are looking at, what our schools are looking at, at the elementary level, at the middle school level, and at the high school level, and all of our departments. And that really begins this process tonight. As the public knows from seeing the agenda, we'll be talking about our elementary level needs tonight. Our three principals, our three elementary school principals are here. And then we'll be talking about one of our big program areas in special education. And then over the next two meetings, we'll be talking about other areas, both middle school and high school and other departments. The projected retirements that we know as of, as of today are included in this budget. And we've made sure we've backed out the appropriate dollars, knowing that we have people that are going to retire. We've also heard from some who are resigning, not retiring, but resigning, and those are also included. The grant salaries and expenses are included as offsets, and we have separate slides on, on that so that the public will see what we're doing with that. Our next slide, just an overview at the elementary level. We really have no changes at the Borough School and the IGO School, both elementary schools. The Taylor School, we're articulating that we're reducing one position. It's actually a position that we didn't fill this year. So we've had it in the budget and looking at our enrollment numbers. I will say parenthetically around this because I think it's very important to say, that we continue to analyze our enrollment. And I would be very comfortable coming back to this committee if we find that we have some changes that are taking place over the next few months and that we may need another funding request. So at this point in time, we don't need that. But that doesn't mean that as enrollment shifts, and I know that this committee has listened to those requests in the past. So we are funding a little bit more music, another point two to spread around the three schools, looking at some chorus programs that we piloted a little bit at the IGO School and we think are important. The art position really evened off some staffing issues that we had this year. So that's built into, that's built into the FY09 budget. It allowed us to have less travel and more support in our programs at the elementary level, do less sharing of people, which I think is, for a point one, is a judicious way and a prudent way to use available salary. The next page talks about the middle school and the high school. And as I said, Sue Abrams, the principal of the Hearn Middle School, and Jeff Theaters, the principal of Foxborough High School, will be here next week to talk specifically about that. I'll just give you a quick overview. Classroom teachers, we're again, we're looking at enrollment in grades five and six. The assistant principal position, we have one full-time position and we have one half-time position. At this point in time, we're supporting the additional point five, the school, the Hearn School is the same size as Foxborough High School, and we think there's some equity there that, that we should at least take a look at in this round, this preliminary round of the budget. The guidance, educational assistant is costing us a little bit to make this a guidance secretary, which offers more service to the guidance department. I know that this committee and I know the public feels, and I strongly feel, that we're building back our guidance program and building that at the elementary level and having the appropriate support. I think it's important. The high school, music position, this will strengthen some of our early morning work that we do for a point one. We have a person who's point nine right now, and we think having that person full-time would strengthen the program here at the high school. The art position is something that as I've been looking at, the equity around all of our programs, this is more, I call this a leadership change, in that our art person, our K-12 art person would be a point four leader. He's been a point two leader, I think, for a few years now. And I think we need to add some equity back to that so that the supervision and the program enhancements can continue. And so that's, I call that a leadership upgrade in, in this preliminary budget. Staffing changes, again, we summarize, to summarize what I just walked you through, when you walked through the elementary, middle, high school, and then music and art, the total request right now is 2.1 full-time equivalent positions when you net those out. And I also think it's important because I think that the school committee, and I know, and I believe this too, in working in other budgets in other places, I think we also have to put in some areas that we would like, that we know are going to be challenged unless the economic and revenue climate changes considerably over the next few months. But you heard tonight, the importance of our early childhood coordinator and the investment that we've made this year. We have, that's not included in the budget but has taken much of our discussion in the last couple of months as we started to develop. Behavior therapist, I'm going to let Cindy Brunelli talk a little bit about that when she comes up to talk about special education because we've seen some success with the half-time person that we have now. Math specialist, this is an area I know the elementary principals are going to talk a little bit about tonight. We have not included an additional person in the budget at the elementary level. We're spreading one person among the three buildings. We'll talk a little bit about that. I also think we need an update on, on the effectiveness of that. But we want to make sure that it's out of the public's eye so that people can see what, what the needs, what the needs are and what we possibly could do in the future. The middle school was looking at an additional point two. We have a 1.4 full-time equivalent positions in nurse staffing at Hearn. And we've been looking at a point two in the first round of the budget, and we just felt we couldn't afford it right now. Part of that, and I'll get to it when we talk about grant offsets, but I want, I want to make sure that the public is clear about this. We have funded $68,000 worth of nurse staffing across the system this year through a grant through the Department of Public Health. We have no indication at this point in time, and we've been checking around other districts in the last week or so. We have no indication at this time that that is going to be funded by the Department of Public Health. Part of that is a legislative process, and they're not clear that the funding is going to be there. So I didn't think it was prudent to try to add point two to an FTE when we're already going to fund in this budget $68,000 worth of, we're not going to be able to offset the budget with that grant at this point in time. Now, that doesn't mean we won't be able to at some point in time when we hear more. But we did not do that in this preliminary round. So we did, we did take that point two off the table. And the high school was interested in a world language teacher, 1.0. I've asked Jeff to talk a little bit about that from that kind of need next week when he, but right now, these are not, these are positions that are not included in the budget at this time. The components of the FY09 salary increases, just so that the public is aware, salary offset reduced. At this point in time, we're projecting, and I know the committee knows, that this budget, FY08, we projected a $125,000 salary offset in the FY09 budget. We've had a number of people, well, we didn't have as many people retire as we thought. I'm happy about that, but it hasn't helped our budget. Because I think we, we have some of the really good people that have decided to stay with us for a, for a longer period of time. So we've been very cautious about that at this point in time. I don't think we can support a $125,000 offset. So we've put in, at this time, a placeholder for $50,000. And we're going to continue to analyze those accounts as we move along. And that, that's already having taken out the retirees that we know about. So I think we're being prudent about that right now, but we'll continue to analyze it. The new position changes, that 2.1 FTE that I described in that earlier slide, it, we're judging that at $134,241. We backed out the projected retirements that I talked about earlier. That should net us $145,499. The negotiated increases, we have some contracts that we have negotiations have already completed in the second or third year of some of our contracts. Paul, you have a good sense of that. And, and this includes what we would owe people in steps and lanes that we've already, that we've already calculated. So that's $787,772. Projected COLA, that's for the other contracts that we don't have negoti, settled settlements, settled negotiations. Quite frankly, that's a placeholder number. We were trying to come up with a number that we wanted to put in, and we put that number in. And we're not going to talk too much more about what that number means because we haven't gone to the bargaining table yet. So we think that's a good placeholder number that can be adjusted at, at some point when we get closer to settlements. So that total increase is over $1.3 million, $1,326,514. That's on the salary side. The next slide is the expense side. And the three areas in special education that I mentioned earlier, tuition, transportation, and therapy, these are real numbers. These are the run rates that we're projecting right now. And I think it's important to put those run rates in. put those run rates in, and I think just in good planning. And I'll let, I know Cindy has some description of that and some discussion about that. Transportation is a fuel charge. We're adjusting our fuel. It's difficult to get a handle on this fuel adjustment. I drive by the gas station every few days and try to figure it out myself personally, and I'm struggling with that. But we put it in for bus transportation. Educational supply accounts, that's across the board, funding our consumables in both English language arts and mathematics with our new programs, and we'll break those down by levels as we move along. Connect Ed, which I'm going to talk about under other, we've had very, very good experience in our first couple of calls with Connect Ed, and so we put that in the budget for next year. Legal expense, it's also prudent in a year of negotiations to put in additional money for legal, so we have done that. Textbook adoption is up $10,000 from the number that we're carrying in this year's budget of $60,000, and that's some work that Debbie has been doing with principals and department heads and directors, to make sure that we have the amount of money that we believe we need. We've also increased professional development, and that same way, that's also work that's been accomplished with our principals and department heads and our directors, so that the work, that's really work that's just taken place over the last month with Debbie, so she's been working on putting that budget together for us. Collaborative in special programs, that is, that's funding the school-to-career position that we wanted to make sure was in the budget. And athletics, that's a going-forward cost for officials and supervision, and again, we'll have Craig Najeri, our athletic director, explaining that more fully. But these are the numbers that we're carrying in the budget now, under expenses. So when we add all of that up, we are, at this point in time, in the, and have I said the word preliminary enough yet? I think people are understanding it. The preliminary budget is $1,868,696 above our current spending level, and we've calculated that at 7.97% as an increase. And again, this is something that we'll continue to work on, but I believe it's important to discuss our needs in order to move the school district ahead, and I think that all the work that people accomplished in this is important, and this starts our much more detailed discussion.
And Chris, just for the committee's sake, and these are just round numbers, so don't quote me, but when we met with the town and they gave us their idea of where we sat financially, and where they thought we would probably have to come in, again, recognizing that Randy used the word preliminary many times, in terms of revenue and state aid, et cetera. But they were looking at our piece going up somewhere in the vicinity of about $400,000, and this is 1.9. So the difference at this point, just for purposes of this preliminary discussion, is about a million and a half dollars. All right? Just for Flanders, so that everybody kind of understands what kind of a spread we're working with now. As Chris mentioned, this is preliminary, so that that number might come down as we go over time. In addition, the revenue number was preliminary, which could come up over time, and we'll meet someplace between the two numbers by the time we get to town meeting.
Thanks. And then some other areas that I think it's important to discuss, outside resources that we use as budget offsets revolving, we've made some adjustments in looking at our revolving accounts and what we can use to offset, and we can go over that in much more detail. As you can see, the grant is down. We have backed out the nurse part of that grant from the Department of Public Health. And I think at this point in time, I mean, I'm hopeful that we're going to receive better news on that. I think we can write it in a way that makes good sense, and this will be in the process. I know that. But at this point in time, we have actually not heard very good news on that, so. Circuit breaker, we've billed more, as you can see, from some of our outside, from some of our outer district that we've built into the budget. We're going to be billing more this year for costs this year, because we built in this year's cost into next year's budget, and since there's a year lag in covering the funds, we believe that the state will be sending us more. We don't have an exact number on that yet, but we believe that we can increase that by $50,000 at this point in time. And then, I think, just to go over, now we have data that just gives some comparisons from year to year that I think are important. This is something that we'll continue to discuss as we move along. FY03 to FY04, that was the time when the state budget was in quite a bit of stress, and so there was a reduction there. And then from FY04 to '05, there was a 3.5% increase. '05 to '06, you can see a 2.19% increase. '06 to '07, 2.23%. And then from a year ago to this budget that we're spending right now is a 3.87% increase. And as Larry mentioned, and I mentioned, we're right now in our preliminary phase, looking at a 7.97% increase, building what we have right now. So I think it's important to look at where we are with group of budget.
And I think, again, just for educational purposes, if you look at three, four, five, six, and seven, which is five years, the average for that five years is an increase of 1.7%, and that's pretty close to what Randy was thinking that we were going to have for this year. Now, again, as you can see, it goes from a minus three to a plus three, with some in between, but the average in that timeframe is about 1.7%, and the preliminary numbers that they put together, we're looking around that same thing. Since he's put the preliminary numbers together, pension costs are coming in higher than they anticipated, and so there are a few things that are already breaking against us, and nothing yet that is broke in our favor. So again, just from a preliminary standpoint, I want everyone to have all the data.
And then we break out our numbers in the budget, in the allocation areas, and from central administration, instruction, special education, plant operations, transportation, technology, and athletics, it's always good to see where we spend. And I think it's important to take a look at that, and continuing to make sure we're spending in the right places. And then we also look at enrollments. We're looking at, in our projection, our preschool numbers, we're looking at about the same, although even though our FY08 number, these are, FY07, FY08 are October 1 numbers, and they've already been, they're already adjusting up, as we heard earlier, at 90, but we're looking at that right now. Our elementary numbers are down a little, but not enough to make really any kind of decreases, because they're not really down that much. Middle school numbers are up, and that's, I think, the reason you'll hear from Sue Abrams next week about need for additional staffing. And our high school numbers are up, and we'll hear from Jeff, although we haven't put anything, additional staffing in the budget on that. Our outer district numbers are pretty well the same, and I'll let Cindy talk about that And then we thought it would be interesting to put in information about per pupil spending, give some historical data about that from '94 to 2005. We, in some cases, could go out a little bit to 2006. Some of this is just the information we can get from the Department of Education, and I think it's helpful to take a look at that. Regular day is minus special education, and we can see some of the trends there, close to the state average. The next one is special education, and I think we've, even though we've added some costs to it, I think we've been, particularly against the state average, very prudent in how we place students and how we spend our dollars in this area. And then we add those together, and we have similar trends, I think, as well. And then our next slide, and again, this is just information for people to take a look at, and we can take a look at, regular education is the red line, special education is the blue line, and the total, obviously, would sit somewhere in the middle, and so we can see the differences in just where we spend, just in our community. And then we've been doing some comparative data. I know the committee has seen some of this, and I know that the advisory committee has seen some of this, so we'll be seeing this over the years. We take a look at, and again, same kind of breakout, we look at FY04, FY05, and FY06. The first one, again, is regular day, and we can see where we were in '04, where we were in '05, and where our comparison is in '06. And again, we have, this is, we lag a little bit behind because of the Department of it and their ability to give us this data. Whenever we see it, we will certainly update, we could certainly update these slides as well.
Paul, just a question for you on this slide. In the past, you've talked about different communities classifying expenses different ways. Is this where the comparison gets a little bit out of line, how you might show certain things versus someone else, or is it a different report?
It would be on a different report, and, no, I'm sorry. The state calculates per pupil costs several different ways. It would be more apparent on this report as opposed to net school spending, which there's a number out there, net school spending, which I think we talked about later, or in the presentation at the edco. So yes, this is part where some of those discrepancies do cause variations.
My only comment is, while we can look at the trend, and the trend is going in the right direction for the students of Foxborough, if someone were just to look at this and say, you know, we're spending $7,039, someone else is spending $6,154 or $7,811, they may not be pure apple-to-apple comparisons.
Correct.
Because of how they classify expenses.
Absolutely. So our other slides, we look at, just as we did with this slide, the Foxborough comparison, when we compare to other communities, we look at special education as a separate area, and we can see some differences. That's fairly similar, I think, representation on the three years. And then we blend the rates and have that total, and again, we can see FY04, FY05, and FY06, and we can see some of the differences there. And again, I think one of the things, obviously, we do have to be careful about whether they're all in the same places, so. And then finally, before we get into more depth in this, our next steps, we will continue to review our budget for FY09 as an administrative team. You'll begin the review of the budget tonight, where, as I mentioned earlier, our elementary school principals are here, and our special education director is also here, so we'll be looking at those two areas tonight, and then we'll be looking at all of our other areas over the next two meetings. We'll continue to monitor available revenue changes, and Larry mentioned it, we'll be working closely with the town, we'll be looking at the legislature. From what I can tell, it looks like the governor's State of the State address will be the first, our first glimpse of what the state revenue might look like, and that usually is mid-January, and we'll get a sense, we'll get a specific date, and we'll be able to have a better sense of what the governor, I've heard through the grapevine a little bit, that this is an education governor, so we hope to see some education spending at the state level. We have a couple of areas that are obvious, big areas that we need some assistance in. One is continued support in Chapter 70, additional support in Chapter 70 even. But I know that the School Committee Association, the Municipal Association, Municipal Officials Association, MMA, and the Superintendent's Association have been banding together in the last couple of years to look at a couple of other big areas. One of them is around supporting special education, transportation, and the circuit breaker, an area that we're adding costs to, that you've seen just in this presentation tonight. And the other one is relief in charter school tuitions, and we are still looking at that, and we feel that we have some legislative support at the upper levels in that, and it's just a matter of, we're going to be able to get the legislature to agree on that. So we'll be looking at available revenue changes, both at the state level. I know that Randy Scollins is preparing kind of a five-year projection on what he's seeing for available revenue, and we will be expecting that, I think, in the next few weeks or so. Another meeting that we've been, that we'll be scheduling, so that we'll have a chance to get another view of the town's available revenue. We will present the budget request to the advisory committee. We have a meet-and-greet session Wednesday night, and we'll be introducing ourselves, which will be fun. And then the school committee, obviously, will be working on this over the next two months, and then I know after your final vote, and just in listening to the history, we'll continue to be working on it occasionally as we move through before we get to town meeting. So again, to close with what I opened with, it is a preliminary budget, and we do have a lot of work to do, and as Larry described, we have a significant gap. But I think people of goodwill and all of the work that we'll be doing over the next few months will continue, I believe, to offer good support to our students, and we'll be advocating, but still understanding that we all work together, so. That's the next steps, okay?
Do you want to invite your guests up?
I certainly would. We'll start with our elementary school principals. Michelle McCarthy, the principal of the Borough Elementary School, Inger Delati, principal of the Igo Elementary School, and Kay Nailor, the principal of the Taylor Elementary School. Did I get the right order, or?
She didn't have Borough, I guess.
No, so no. Thank you for joining us today.
All right. We want to thank, the three of us want to thank you for inviting us to present our budgets, and Dr. Delati is going to discuss staffing, and Michelle McCarthy is going to discuss the supplies materials.
The supplies at the elementary level, when you look at the budget that you were given, there really are little changes in the supplies budget. The one exception to that you'll see is in the textbook line, and that is mainly due to two factors. One, as Dr. Marnes had discussed earlier, with the adoption of the new reading program, the trophies reading program, and the new Think Math program, to sustain the progress that we've made with those new programs, we need to purchase the consumable materials that go along with them, so that is one of the reasons for the increase. And the other, as you're also aware, that at the elementary level, we, our wellness teachers are piloting the Great Body Shop curriculum this year, and in anticipation of adopting that program at the end of the year, as we review, we did need to budget for that also. So that's mainly why you see the increase in that line.
As far as, do we have any questions on materials before I talk a little bit about staffing?
Why don't you then go into staffing?
Go ahead, okay. All right. Given that the budget projections and the overview that you presented tonight are very fiscally conservative, we could say at this time, we have not afforded a request for any additional staffing at the elementary level. We do feel, as you noted, there's a potential reduction of one teacher at the Taylor based on enrollment projections, but we do feel with the number of teachers we have this year, that we'll be able to maintain favorable class sizes next year, and to progress with the level services that we're offering currently with the staffing as is. We did also, though, as you've asked this before, if a budget windfall comes, what direction would we like to go in? And I wanted to talk about two positions that we would like to see increase if the funding becomes available. The first, Diana Parb presented today what the early childhood position looks like. I wanted to go back to a couple of things that she mentioned. It is a .5 position. We would really like, if there's a potential to expand and increase that, we'd like to see that become a full-time position. A few of the pieces that Diana mentioned that have been really valuable this year is that, as the early childhood coordinator, she's doing that as the early childhood coordinator, she's doing a lot of the evaluations. So, our classroom teachers do not have to leave the classroom constantly to go. And I think it's important to think about, when you're evaluating a three-year-old child, a young child, it's not a one-session evaluation. You can't do all the testing. You're working with kids with a very short attention span and interest level. And you also have to look at multiple settings. So, it's a multiple-day process to do an evaluation, to go see the child in an authentic setting, to interview the parents. It's not, it takes a substantial amount of time. Not only are we evaluating the new students coming in from early intervention, but as Diana mentioned also, we're screening students when the parents call with concern. We do put that in the newsletter, that we do offer screening for children if their parents have concerns about the way they're developing. So, that screening also takes some additional time. We also reevaluate students, or evaluate students that enter our preschool as typical peers, because they come in through the lottery, and as they go through the year, issues arise, or on a closer look, in a peer group, they look like they may have some developmental needs. So, Diana's doing a lot of that evaluation. That takes a bulk of the .5 time, that evaluation piece. The other thing I wanted to mention with the early intervention, I know they talked about how we're working on building that bridge. I think it's important, I'm not sure if everybody's familiar with the way early intervention operates, but when children are identified and become eligible for early intervention services, all those services take place in their home. So, the therapists go into the household in our, working on speech-language goals, or working on physical therapy. Parents are part of that. So, they're sitting with the therapist, they're watching what's happening. They're getting a lot of feedback on how they can support their child at home, how they can deal with the issues that they're seeing developmentally. For some of our kids that have the most significant needs, children that are on the spectrum, children with significant communication delays, the recommendation is often five full days of school. So, they're coming in at three, from parents who have had all the therapists working in their home, to letting their child walk out the door at nine o'clock and not come home till three. So, that's a huge change for families. And that's why building that bridge is so critical. It's very hard. You're not getting the same constant feedback. You're not getting the modeling. So, have someone, to have a resource to bridge that gap, to call and answer questions for parents, it has been really valuable. The other thing that was mentioned, that if we were able to grow that position, is the NAYC accreditation process. As we are in the self-study mode, that is something we would like to pursue. Again, it's an enormous amount of time, and we would like to protect the integrity of the classroom. There is a lot of work, the teachers, a lot of data collection, a lot of goal-setting that the teachers have to do as part of that. But to have somebody available to be able to coordinate it without cutting away from the service time and the outreach that we're bringing into that position. So, that's some of the reasons we'd like to see that expand if that was possible. The other position that you see reflected is the additional math specialist. And I want to talk a little bit about how that position's being used this year, and then build my case for why I would like to see it grow. But we have a full-time math specialist. That was a new addition this year. We have one person in that role at the elementary. It's Katie Young. She's working between the three elementary schools. As you know, we're on a six-day cycle. So, if you think about that, just as a general estimate, she's in each school two days of the cycle. At the Igo School, I have 18 teachers. So, in each day, she sees about eight to nine teachers. So, just so you have a sense of what that schedule looks like. She's busy all day long. I was meeting with the teacher, actually, last week, I think Wednesday, and we were talking about the new Think Math program. And this is anecdotal data, but we were talking about the curriculum and talking about the program. And the teacher had said, you know, the new math specialist is the best thing that we have done as a district in years. So, I just want you to know from the teachers, and that's not the first person that I've heard it from. What we see the position doing when we go into classrooms is, Katie is in, on average, about an hour blocks in the classroom. She goes in, and she begins by pulling a small group of kids that are really ready for some enrichment and extension work. So, while the classroom teacher is presenting the general math lesson, she pulls kids that are really fairly proficient, and does a lot of extension, critical thinking, higher-order, enrichment kind of projects. Those children, then, she often leaves assignments or project-based things that they continue to work on throughout the week. And then, she comes back in and checks in with them, and does some additional work to extend their knowledge. When those kids are finished meeting with Katie, they also filter back in and join the class group. And then, she's able to take small groups of kids that may need some targeted intervention. So, they get to see the whole class presentation, they get to hear what's going on, and then they get the opportunity to have that re-taught, re-explained in a different way, to have difficult concepts broken down differently. So, we're really, I think, finding that position has been invaluable in helping with the direct service for children at both ends of the range, as well as helping teachers expand their knowledge base and the tool sets of things that they're doing with students. So, it's been very, very positive this year. I think one thing that we'd like to see, one of the reasons we'd like to see that expand, is if you had two full-time positions, that would be, one, there'd be greater accessibility so that for the direct service, she'd be able to meet more frequently with those groups, which would allow you to do a lot more depth in terms of the project-based learning and the higher-order lessons that she's designing. So, a greater frequency would really be beneficial. The other piece that we see as a critical part of that role, that's a short change when you don't have as much time, is that coaching element. And what I mean by that is that all the time, as Katie's in classrooms, teachers are asking questions about, you know, struggling with this piece of the new curriculum. And she's able to say, well, this is what I saw in another classroom, this is how somebody else is using it, or let me take that and take a look at it and see how I can break it down. There's a lot of professional learning that happens through that coaching. And it's happening on the fly all the time now. And Katie's been wonderful about saying, you know, let me get back to you, let me look into that, and getting back to teachers, why don't you try presenting it this way? It's been invaluable. And we really do believe in that, coaching as a highly effective professional development model. You can provide all the one-day workshops, you know, have presenters come in, they can be fabulous. But when teachers go back to try that new learning out in the classroom setting, things come up. It doesn't go as smoothly. To have a coach available to say, to support that ongoing momentum is really valuable. So, the coaching piece is not as, we don't have as much time to do as much of that as we would like with a one person in that role. If we were to expand that, we'd see the frequency increasing, as well as the professional development and coaching part. So, that's sort of the direction that we'd like to go. We think it's a very powerful model. And in the future, we'd like to look at, you know, additional content areas. Because again, I think it's the best way that we can improve instruction in the classroom is to provide high-quality professional development for the teachers, as well as continuing to look at the ways we teach and present information. Those are our staffing increases. Other than that, you'll see that it is a level-service budget. There are no other requests that we can afford at this time.
Okay. Kate, do you want to add anything?
No.
Okay. Questions from the committee?
I have a question that I would just like to support what Ingrid was saying. We had a nice conversation today, the four of us. It's really great working with these nice ladies. When it comes to the coaching role, we were talking about coaches for both math and literacy, which are the two heavy-hit areas. Last week, I heard someone explain it in a way that really hit home to me. I mean, I believe in this model, but it really explained it in a way that I think everybody can understand. And that is, they use a medical model. So, if you look at the way we teach teachers, or that we expect professionally-developed teachers, we're getting away from the old, we call them the one-shot, sending people off-site for a day, and you come back, maybe you went by yourself. That's not particularly effective. Our in-house workshops, as Dr. Allardy mentioned, yes, we do workshops. Kids have gone home for the, you know, kids stay home for the day. We do workshops for teachers. They absorb the learning, and they go back to the classroom. And the way it was explained last week at a session I was at, was that if you look at the medical model, let's say, training a surgeon, that yes, surgeons have classes, and they go to medical school, and they learn how to be a surgeon. And then, somebody puts them back in an operating room and expects them to do surgery while somebody else is watching them and say, we'll do this, do that, just refine that a little bit. What we don't do for teachers is have them learn, and then go back to the classroom, and have somebody alongside them to answer the questions or to be able to ask in a, I mean, surgery's not no-risk, but in education, it would be a more no-risk situation. So, that is the kind of professional development in our world, it's called classroom-based professional development, that we're really interested in as a district. And that I know, you know, this committee, I've only been here four weeks, but I know this committee's really interested in seeing, as Dr. Marneus said, moving ahead and what can we do? And for me, it's very exciting to be part of that, but it's also difficult to sit here and think about, be excited about moving ahead, but yet, we don't have any more money, and we're going to do exactly the same thing. So, that is something we talked about with our professional development model. We'd really like to see that role expand in this district, because we know it could be really powerful. And we just started talking about it, and Chris and I have talked about it as well.
Well, what's important, what I heard tonight is important, is when we debated adding the position last year, we wanted the position to do three things for us. One, we wanted to help those children that were at the upper end, and we could push them a little further. I want to avoid the word that sometimes gets used to address those students. We then wanted to also take those students who were struggling and give them a little extra help. And the third thing we wanted this position to do was to help the teachers understand the new program. And it sounds like, from what you're saying tonight, that all three of those objectives are being addressed, that we are taking those students who can excel and giving them extra work, those that are struggling a little bit and trying to teach them in a little different way so that they can keep up with the program, as well as work with the teachers. So, that's encouraging, and I look forward to the full review that we'll do later this year. But those were important criteria that this committee established when we funded those positions.
And I just think to add to what both Debbie and Ingrid were saying is that within our schools, there's such a great knowledge base. And we've been using our directors also as helping to facilitate some learning communities, some collaboration time with teachers. But I think also thinking about elementary teachers are generalists, and having someone who has that content knowledge, whether that be literacy or math, that can support. Because again, as an elementary teacher, you're looking at science, social studies, literacy, math, that that's where we're seeing that that coach would be of assistance.
You have no other questions?
And also, I want to speak to Katie. She's been spread out, trying to thin. That's why we'd like to recommend another math specialist. She has 18 teachers to take care of at the Igo, 12 at the Borough, and 14 at the Taylor. So, you know, it's really tough.
Absolutely.
But thank you anyway for giving us the math specialist.
My only question, and I know we have a very general aggregate of the enrollments, and just to check, just, so, from what I see here, roughly at the elementary K through four, there's no class that exceeds about 20 students, or at least that's the average number?
Twenty, I would say right now they're ranging about 16 to 21.
16 to 21.
23. 23, I have two classes.
Yeah, I do too. With the 23.
And kindergarten, right?
Kindergarten, and we have assistants in the room.
I have first grade.
So, Taylor and Borough has them up to 23.
But again, mine's with kindergarten, and there are assistants.
Okay, so, we're under special needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You reserve the right to cross-examine at a later date. Thank you very much. You can be recalled, that's correct. Remember, you're still under the oath. Okay, Cindy?
Hello again.
Hello again.
With regard to the special education budget, what I'd like to do is to speak to the areas that are showing the largest increase with regard to the budget, because I do think that that's probably where you're going to have the most questions.
Right.
And I think that's probably where I'd like to share a little bit of information. The first area is the contracted therapies area. And this is in fact up from the FY08 budget. And it truly is preliminary at this point.
This is page nine of the committee.
Correct.
Thank you.
However, I have in fact based it on actual spending from last year, as well as what we have spent currently for the first three months of this year. It's not even nearly close to enough of a picture for me to give you a true, true proposed figure with regard to the increase. However, what I am being told, and what we are actually being given, is in fact increases with regard to per-hour costs for our behavior specialists that we consult with, or our ABA specialists, or our speech and language people that in fact we contract with outside of the district beyond our people. So, I only felt that it would be fair to give you the best possible picture with regard to where I think the most increase in fact might show up in the special education budget. And that is in fact in the area of contracted therapies. I'm hoping that in fact it will decrease.
Cindy, can you just give an example for the public of what that means, contracted ABA, what is ABA services, for instance? It's a term that's kind of thrown around.
Contracted therapies is really an umbrella for services that the district does not or cannot provide. And we need to seek expertise outside of the district for those services. ABA is one of those kinds of services, which is applied behavior analysis. And it's a methodology with regard to dealing with problematic behaviors in young children. It is not something that regular education staff is trained to do. And we do in fact need to seek the expertise of someone outside of the district. Also, with regard to behavioral consultants, although we do have our new .5 behavior specialist position, there are some behaviors that are so unique and so difficult to handle that in fact we need to seek the advice of experts in the field with regard to how to deal with those particular behaviors. So, those are the kinds of contracted therapies that fall into that big umbrella. We also have a number of children that have specialized speech and language needs that again are over and above what our regular related service providers can in fact provide. We try very hard to access the services of our collaboratives. Spoke Collaborative is in fact the group that usually provides our related service people. And they in fact are the people that are telling us to expect an increase in cost per hour of some of those related service providers. So, I really did need to build that into the budget. I'm hoping however, that in fact, because we do have our .5 behavior specialist, the new position this year, that in fact, that will impact the need for some of the behavior consulting that we have had to do in the past, as well as some of maybe even the ABA services that are being offered for our young children. It's again, too early to tell, but I am very hopeful. And in fact, those positions will help out in that regard. The other area that I wanted to talk, do you have any questions about that?
Martha, yeah.
Would we ever be at a point where if our out-of-district placement was at such a high figure, that would it be who of us to hire a full-time person and service these children in-house, per se, if we had someone who was even more qualified, who could handle a lot more behavioral problems? I mean, do we ever look at it two ways?
Yeah, we, actually, we are looking at it two ways this year, because Cindy was, has advocated for another .5. And really, that's what we're looking at. We're looking at what we believe the cost might be in this. And then, are we, would we be able to offset that cost by hiring a person or expanding their responsibilities, whether that's .5 or whatever in between? So, that's really, that's really what we're looking at, what we're looking at now. And right now, we don't know.
It's really too early to tell. However, there are good indicators that in fact, it will in fact impact some possible out-of-district placements positively, you know, in regard to preventing some possible out-of-district placements, at least at the elementary level. That's my hope.
But knowing the individuals that you're serving now, can you, it sounds like you're, it's unclear whether this position could service certain individuals. But if you actually know the problems that are, these individuals have now, you can't determine if you put in this .5 position, whether they would be able to service the existing individuals right now that we're servicing. And obviously, we can't tell who's going to be moving into the district in the future. But the ones now, it's not possible to?
I'm not real sure I understand. Are you talking about the children that we have in district that are at risk, or the children that we have currently in out-of-district placements?
Out-of-district placements.
Okay. .5 would not be able to do that. .5 would not be able to do that. However, if it was in fact at some point increased to a full-time position, that would certainly be my goal, to have at least one of those students to be able to return to the public school.
Doesn't it also cut down transportation costs too? I mean, it kind of rushes.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's correct. But it's, but it's not something that we really need to, we really want to rush into. It's something that really needs to be planned out very, very carefully because we certainly don't want to bring kids back too early just for the sake of saving money because in fact that usually backfires and you end up having to reconsider an out-of-district placement. So we don't really want to go in that direction, but that most definitely would be my objective in that regard. That sort of touches on the fact that tuitions are up. And although we're really trying very hard to hold the line with regard to our out-of-district placements, and we have pretty much been pretty consistent with our numbers and they range anywhere between 28 and 35, they've been consistently hovering around 30. Tuitions, we have no control over the increases in out-of-district tuitions, and they have in fact been rising at about a 4% increase, some of them even higher than that. Some of the private placements are in fact capable of going as high as a 6% increase. So it's costly, it's something that we don't do quickly or without a whole lot of thought and without a whole lot of effort in trying to keep kids in district as long as we possibly can. However, it's an inventuality that in fact some kids have to be placed, you know, in an alternative placement. But we have in fact looked at our placements and we've done some, made some recommendations, and we've done some moving around, and we have in fact been pretty, I think, productive with regard to moving kids in, to less restrictive placements, not necessarily back to the district yet, but moving them from maybe a day, a private school day placement into more collaborative programs, which are in fact less restrictive and truly are the next step back into the public school. So I would like to see the district continue to do that, and that in fact cuts down the cost as well because collaborative placements are in fact less expensive than our private school placements.
Just a quick question on the placements. If you look at the prior few years, it's roughly a million four, you have to take a little bit each year. Last year, we dropped it, Paul, to 1,150. So most of the big increase this year is making up for the decrease last year. And we already know from our early discussions on where we are budget-wise this year, we're running much more than we thought. So Paul, could you just refresh the committee on the rationale we used for reducing the 1317 to the 1149 last, in this current fiscal year? Because that amounts to 170,000 of the 300,000 increase that you're requesting in '09.
Certainly. For several years, we had actually budgeted a number that exceeded what we'd actually spent. And last year, we took a real hard look at it and only budgeted the students that we were better than, and I probably said different numbers, 85, 90% sure would be in an out-of-district placement. As a result, it was a very conservative, very tight projection. And at this point, there have been increases beyond our control as well as some students, there have been some students that Cindy's worked really hard and has actually changed some of their placements, which in one case saved us, I think in excess of $40,000 by moving the child to a different program, and which we think, by the way, was in the best interest of the child. But then there have been other situations where placements have gone up dramatically. There's one of the schools that we have a student at that served notice on us as of September 28th, the date of the letter, that they anticipate a price increase, an increase of $44,883 for a newly authorized tuition price of 192,992. Now, we only have one child at this particular school, but that's an example of a private school that has said to us, well, tuition's going up $44,000, we don't have any control. And our only control on a situation such as this would be to find another location or another school for that child. And in some cases, the child's needs are so specialized and unique that there are not lots of other schools out there that provide these kinds of services. So as much as we like to think that the, some of the tuition rates are within tuition, this is one that we couldn't believe that they were projecting a $44,000 increase.
Correct. We have also had a number of move-ins to the district that were in very costly day placements. They've moved in this year, which in fact means that we are programmatically responsible for them this year. However, we do need to budget for those placements for next year because of the move-in law, that's the way that it's managed. The other area that continues to rise is transportation, and again, that's tied to out-of-district placements as well as the cost of fuel, and that continues, continues to climb. The other impact that I don't really think most people even are aware of is the impact of the McKinny-Vento Act with regard to homeless. That impact on our transportation bill is something that we cannot expect and cannot project or plan in that the law says that if we have a student that is placed in a temporary foster care situation in our town, then we are responsible for half the cost of transportation for that student to return back to his or her home school district. It gets to be very, very expensive. It doesn't happen often, but when it does, it comes out of the blue, and it's not money that we have in fact budgeted for. Last year, we were hit pretty significantly to the tune of almost $30,000 for just specific transportation for temporarily, temporary homeless students.
I think the other piece to that too that's important is that, is just the flipside of that issue, and that's a student who is a Foxborough student who goes into a placement, a foster placement in another community, that student has the right to come back to the Foxborough public schools. And so we split that cost with whatever that community is. So it's two, all sides of that.
Right. So it's not just Foxborough. Everybody's actually feeling a pinch of that situation.
Yeah, that's federal, McKinney-Vento is federal legislation.
So those three accounts that you just reviewed for us represent 80% of your increase. And just so the public knows that when, you know, special ed is you're projecting a budget increase of 9.2%, 80% of that is in these items alone.
Correct.
And so what's difficult, I think, sometimes for the committee is that these expenditures are mandated, right? So we need to, so if you have to spend an extra 9% in this area and your overall spending is limited, then that means we have to reduce it other places. It's not like you could sit here and argue, you know, negotiate budget reduction someplace else. And that's why your job becomes so important because you're advocating for the best interest of the student, but you're also trying to advocate for the best interest of the district when it comes to the finances. Because when we increase this particular area by 9%, it does have a dramatic impact across the rest of the budget. And so that's why it's so important to us.
Absolutely.
Questions from the committee on special needs? Okay, well, thank you very much for joining us again. Congratulations.
Cindy, thank you. Thanks very much.
Good luck with your new career.
Okay, we're pretty close to being on the time, which we try hard to do. The next item is the approval of the superintendent's evaluation tool. I know that Katie, you've been taking the lead on this and you've talked about this, I think, two or three times. This is, I think what we talked about was getting the final changes made, which you've highlighted for us.
Yes.
And the idea was to do an up or down vote this evening, hopefully.
Yes.
So let me just kick it over to you and then we'll take a motion to approve.
The, as Larry, as you just said, the changes in the superintendent evaluation tool are highlighted. One is basically wording, and the other, the two changes are on page six and page eight, where it's just clarifying the instructions. Pretty self-explanatory, just are highlighted for the viewers at home. One change is under individual goals, where the instructions are just listing to provide written comments. And the other change is the overall performance rating, taking all responsibility areas and individual goals into account, again, giving an overall performance rating, just simplifying the instructions. So if anybody has any questions.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I have a second.
First by Martha, second by the discussion from the committee. All right, all those in favor, all right? Opposed, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Well, Dr., it was a collaboration. Did you want to change something?
No, I don't.
You said you were going to live with it.
No, I saw a word.
Because there are a couple of other things.
I mentioned this at the last meeting, and I will advocate with the School Committee Association that this is a potential workshop for, in terms of development of a superintendent's evaluation tool. And I know that other, we know other communities are always interested in this, and I think we would, we could be on a panel next, next year.
Okay, yeah, I'm not sure. You're running a workshop.
I think that would be something, I know they're always looking for good ideas and good process.
Again, and if it's a good tool.
A tool that we could share.
We agree that we go into it knowing it's not going to be perfect.
That's right.
We go in knowing that as we go through it the first year, we'll have suggestions. And so before you would present at next fall's panel that Chris just talked about, we'd already been through it once and made the enhancements to it, which should hopefully make it an even better panel discussion for people. And as we said, that information will be released to the public, we'll have a discussion and everything will be out in the open. Okay, the next item is our school committee goals, and again, we've talked about this a couple of times, there were some comments last time we needed to incorporate with the idea that we would vote this in tonight as well. So Katie, let me turn this one to you as well.
Thank you, Larry. Again, just some minor adjustments on the school committee goals. One listed on the first page, again, highlighted, I think, again, after a lot of discussion last, at our last meeting, one of the things that I changed was stating by the end of the 2007, 2008 cycle, the school committee and the superintendent will establish the following goals, which only seems to make sense since, of course, it's a collaboration between the school committee and the superintendent in terms of reaching goals of student achievement. So that was, that changed there. And the other item, again.
Katie, that particularly addresses the first bullet in that as a committee, we have talked about the need to improve our overall scores. And the debate was, well, she would be in the top quartile, the top third, the top whatever, and that since we have a brand-new assistant superintendent and a fairly new superintendent, that we should give them a little bit of time to assess kind of where we are, what we're doing, what we need to do differently, and then all of us together figure out where our goals are for the next couple of years and where do we want to take our performance levels. And then again, coming back to the budget and trying to make sure we fund those things that will help us achieve where we want to go. Okay, go ahead.
I'm going to comment on that just briefly. I know that Kate and I have also been talking about this, and I think, you know, if we're going to be analyzing this, I know that it's something that Debbie and I have been talking about even as today. And if we have an opportunity to come back and say, we have some ideas that we'd like to share, even in the next couple of months, I think it would be appropriate to do that and to have an ongoing discussion about, you know, how do we, as we've been thinking about this, how do we look at achievement and in what ways? Do we look at kind of a blended, where do we fit? Do we look at snapshots in terms of MCAS and SATs and college acceptances and all those benchmarks that we see and that we compare to other school districts? So I think this does give us some room, which I appreciate, at the same time that we certainly are willing and able to come back sooner than that, I hope, to be able to do that.
Martha.
I like the idea of waiting because I don't want us to put unreasonable goals on ourselves or someone else, because I don't think you've been here long enough for you to establish where we can go from here. And I think it's important for us to kind of wade through this a little bit. And you don't want to set people up for failure. That's, that's not the idea. The idea is to try and, to see where we are, where we need to go, and do it in reasonable way. So I have no problem in waiting to set goals, especially as percentages.
Katie.
Very similar comments that I was planning to make about that bullet, so. Oh, no, 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 that's fine. I mean, I think the, I think our goals need to be reasonably ambitious, but I think that we need to be thoughtful about that. And the only other change was just a word change on the second page, again, superintendent's performance.
And again, this, this has not been done in a number of years in the community. We know it's not going to be perfect. We should be looking at this on a regular basis and figuring out how to approve, improve this as well. And I would suggest, Chris, that if you're thinking of a panel discussion at a future joint meeting, being able to have a panel discussion where Katie or other members of the committee talk about how did we, after so many years of not having goals for a school committee, how did we go about coming up with them? And after six or nine months, how did we go about revising them? I think would be also a good topic for a panel discussion.
Agree.
Questions or comments from the committee, or do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve these.
Motion by Bev, second by Martha, discussion.
Yeah, I would like to weigh in because I have a different view.
Okay.
And I would just like to reiterate what I had brought up last time. Certainly, I don't want to impose on the superintendent or the assistant superintendent, and you are the educators, and would have invited your input. These are not your goals, though. These are our goals. And we've talked for the last 18 months about having accountability. We surface, we've given information to the advisory committee about how we wanted things done and how we weren't pleased with our MCAS scores. We, we show other towns in the Hakamuk, we got information this fall that said we're just middle of the pack. And I think, you know, we also had information that said, you know, under EQA, there was a lack of leadership. I think this group has done a marvelous job coming up with the superintendent's goals and evaluation form, but I think we've missed an opportunity here for us to lead and have vision. I had asked Katie, who was the brilliant one of us? It certainly wasn't me. Who came up with the well-written goal of articulating what we want of student achievement to mean? Katie said she didn't remember, she thought it might have been you, Larry, or her. That, to me, was the one thing we could do. It doesn't, we don't have to put something down in the throat of our superintendent. We have a strategic plan, and the reason that that fell out of favor was because, quite honestly, no, the process became meaningless. And we have a plan that says this year, we're going to meet a certain CPI. And it's as simple as, I would have preferred us to have said under student achievement that we, as a school committee, are going to make sure that those aggregate numbers are in fact met. And we're not doing that. We're deferring again, that we're going to, we're, we're not really doing much on student achievement, we're going to wait to find out. And I guess that's the piece that I'm uncomfortable about. If you're going to lead, then we should lead. And I think we certainly have seen enough information where it doesn't have to be so specific that it hurts the school system, but I think by naming a number here, it's our opportunity to lead and be accountable to the taxpayers. And that's all I'll say on it.
Okay.
I think it's more important for us to identify where we want to go. For us to just put a number in there, I'm not comfortable with that, I'm just not. We've never done it before. We've always looked for improvement, and I think that's what we need to do. I think it's, it might be unrealistic for us at this point to put a number to it.
Well, we have numbers, and I guess we're going to say that we came up, that part of the strategic plan, to me, as leaders here, is worthless if we're not going to support that and link that in to something on our student achievement. So this was our opportunity to make a statement to link that to the strategic plan, and it's just, I feel it's a missed opportunity.
So Kate, are you suggesting that bullet number one simply say that, that we, we support, we hold ourselves accountable, whatever words you'd want, to meet the numbers as outlined in the district improvement plan?
Right. That we would meet the composite performance index as outlined in the strategic plan for math and ELA and SATs.
Could you just take, take 60 seconds to write that down and make an amendment to that effect so we have the exact wording so we can get it done?
You really believe that I could do that in 60 seconds?
Well, you take, you Well, you take nine if you need it, but let's make sure that we can get the amendment correct and we can get this finalized. Again, it doesn't have to be perfect, but we want to make sure we're all on the same page. I think, I've heard the committee say very similar, we have the district improvement plans. What I think, what I talked about was, early on, was going beyond the district improvement plans.
That's right.
Now, I think the committee's saying that they're not comfortable doing that at this point until we get more input. And I'm fine with that. Your amendment, though, is a reasonable amendment, in my mind, that says the district improvement plan and the school improvement plans, which you've already approved, that that's, we want to at least make sure that we're meeting that target and are accountable for that target. So if you want to work with the wording, I think, I would certainly support that amendment, and I think we could get it done. So if you could put the language together for us, we could do it right now.
Thank you, Larry.
Could we just take a poll, because there's no, I appreciate that support, but to be honest with you, we've tweaked it so many times that I'm the only one here that has a problem with it. So unless the other members feel similarly, although I thank you for doing that, it doesn't, unless others feel okay with that, I would hate to just, because we're just dragging it on.
What I wanted to comment on is your clarification, Larry, which this bullet, to me, did not represent the DIP's...
Correct.
Numbers. Okay, that, I mean, to me, that was something that we, as a committee, that is our responsibility to ensure that we do that. So for me, it wasn't outlining it in this particular goal. So thank you for clarifying that. If Kate would like that specifically spelled out, I have no problem with that, again, you know, regarding the DIP.
All right. Bev, would you have a problem with putting the DIP language in?
No, I would not.
Martha, would you?
That we meet the goals of the DIP.
I took that piece as a given, and I was trying to use this as a stretch goal. If that's not clear, then I'm okay with adding a goal on the DIP and the SIPs, but the stretch goal, which I think is beyond that, I think we, as a committee, have to work beyond what's already there. But that's the, and I backed off a little bit on that because with new administration to my left, I wanted to partner with them to come up with that. But as far as the DIP and the SIP that we approved, Kate, I'm happy to have a bullet to that effect.
My understanding was that you wanted a number more related to the first bullet, but maybe I'd misunderstood.
No, here, let me throw this out. We would reach, we would reach or exceed our aggregate, excuse me, aggregate MCAS numbers as outlined in the strategic plan, and then go in with the rest of your bullet and that says, the committee will identify and determine future percentile goals for MCAS and SAT scores.
Okay, do I, is that a formal amendment?
Yes.
Do I have a second to that amendment?
I have a second.
Seconded that amendment, okay. So the motion includes, Wendy, did you get that down okay?
No, I'm ready as we go.
Okay, all right.
My second thought I do.
Because I just want to make sure that we get it correct. So when we vote on it, everybody knows what they're voting on. So let's just, we'll wait till we get it written, we'll repeat it, and then we'll take a vote, and we'll move forward. Okay? Can anybody hum the song from Jeopardy?
I think it's reach or exceed, the aggregate scores is outlined in the strategic plan
for MCAS, and I didn't originally say SAT, but they're in there for both.
Right.
We mentioned it.
I don't know if you have to be specific, other than just refer to the strategic plan, because it's all detailed in there.
And determine new percentile goals for MCAS and SAT scores.
New future goals.
Future goals.
That's what we're future.
Based on the superintendent's recommendation.
Right. Okay.
Well, I don't think we need, that is already listed above the bullet. That's why I put that to include all of those bullets.
Right, okay. So Wendy, do you have that now?
So you don't need the second part, is what you're saying?
Sorry.
Just the superintendent piece.
Okay.
So Wendy, would you read the first bullet?
We would reach or exceed the aggregate numbers as outlined in the SIP and determine new future goals based on superintendent's recommendation. Okay.
But we don't need the superintendent.
You don't need that.
The superintendent. Just future goals.
Just the future goals.
We don't need new and future.
What about percentile goals?
The future percentile goals is by year-end. That's when we'll have the new future goals. So the by-year-end has to go to the end of the Senate now.
By year-end? And that is June 30th?
Correct. Okay. With that amendment, are there any other comments? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries five zero. We have the first school committee goals and objectives, and we'll self-evaluate ourselves later this year.
Katie, can I write that through too?
Okay. We're just a few minutes...
Katie, thank you. That was a marvelous work.
Marvelous job, Katie. We're just a few minutes behind schedule. As you know, as chair, I try to keep us on schedule and I try to make sure we allocate the right amount of time for each topic. The next item is Massachusetts School Building Authority update. And before I turn it over to the superintendent to talk about the very good news that's been in the Boston Globe and the local papers, I just wanted to, first of all, take the community back. It's about 18 months ago when Martha became chairman, and one of the first things she did is she asked us to work collabora, collabor, yeah, work together as a school committee with her administration to start to identify the real long-range needs for the school. As you know, we had an open house where we took parents around to all the schools, we videotaped it, we did the Charlie Show, we did lots of things to try to help educate the public. In addition to that, we worked directly with Paul and Mike to put together a package for the state. Now, the state did not provide lots of direction and lots of instructions, and as we understand it, of the 400 and so packages put together, there's 400 different ways of putting them together. But I want to commend the town of Foxborough, particularly people like Paul and Mike and their staffs, because they put together a business case that didn't just say, please give us some money. They talked to the importance of proper maintenance. They talked to the things that Foxborough did as a community, day in and day out, that were smart and wise. The problem is, we have a high school that's 35 years old with 35-year-old windows and a 35-year-old heating system, et cetera. And so they built a case around the fact that we have a good, solid building that has some infrastructure problems. And you have a town like Wellesley that's not satisfied with their high school and wants $150 million for a new high school. And the case that we made was, you shouldn't punish schools that have done a good job with maintenance, and you shouldn't just reward those whose schools are crumbling, and you shouldn't just reward those who want the biggest, best, most modern school in the world. And I think it's that business case that was put together, at least based on reading the Boston Globe, that truly impressed the state. And I don't know that we'd be where we are, and of course, we're not over the finish line yet, but we wouldn't even have been narrowed down to the top 18 without the tremendous work that was done by the staff here in Foxborough to build the business case, to present the business case, and to make the argument. And so to Michael Leary and his staff, and to Paul and his staff to put it together, a tremendous debt of gratitude. Your teams did one phenomenal job. With that, well, Martha has a comment, I'll turn it over to Chris.
Last year, when we went into the, it seems like last year, I think it was, when we went into the Hill to...
April.
Was it April?
Yeah.
Okay, we went in for the day on the Hill. Chris and I were fortunate enough to sit down with Pat Hadden, talk to her about some of the issues. And we stressed it with her at that point, that it is unfair that, you know, a town like Foxborough, who puts money into their system, we felt as though we would be punished because our buildings were in such outside condition. And I think she listened, and I think other people listened, to the fact that, you know, you shouldn't punish a town like ours for trying to maintain your buildings, but we do need the help. So I think the more you expose yourself to the people in the legislature, they do listen. They do listen when you sit down and talk to them. So, you know, Chris, when he came in that day, said, would you like to join me? He said, absolutely. So we did bend her ear, and I think it speaks volumes, because I think they are listening to towns like ours, so it's important.
Chris, I'll turn it over to you now.
Yeah, thank you. I won't repeat what you said, Larry, but I think you know from our discussions over the last few days, I absolutely agree with everything that you've said. This is, this is good, very, very good news. I know that when Katie and Kate and I left a presentation, that the executive director of the Mass School Building Assistance Board, Catherine Craven, walked us through a whole series of things. When she first mentioned, there are 423 statements of interest that were submitted by July 31st, I felt we were, if they were prioritizing from the greatest need, buildings that are really crumbling around themselves, to our need, I thought we were probably in that 400 to 420 range, quite frankly. And I thought it was going to take us a long time to gain funding. But I agree with what Martha just said. And I, actually, as I think about and have worked a little bit with this board and have listened to Treasurer Kay Hill on a couple of occasions, talking about revamping school building assistance in Massachusetts, I think that, I think strategically and politically, they've decided that they are going to reward school districts and communities that have really paid attention to their buildings. So I was surprised when I picked up the Boston Globe and didn't expect to see Foxborough's name in that list. The repair assessment piece, I think, is an area that they are going to pay attention to just that very next day. We had, we had been, Paul and Jeff and Mike and I had been discussing the day before the article came out with a team that was here, a team of five, was it five, Paul, five or six?
Yes.
That were, had our statement of interest and were really verifying all of the data. And were supposed to spend three days, thought they were going to spend three days, actually left in about two and a half days, or actually a day and a half, thought they'd spend three whole days, because the data was so clear and the case was made. And they made sure that they told Paul, they told Mike and others that they didn't need to see anymore because they knew what they had seen and what they had verified was really what had been written. So I think that does also talk in concrete terms about the kind of statement of interest that was submitted. I know that Catherine Craven did talk about the range that they had been seeing on the statements of interest. So that really reiterated some of what, some of the information. Our next step, we were invited, have been invited, the School Building Assistance Board called a week ago and invited the chair of the school committee, the chair of the board of selectmen, and the superintendent of schools to come to a meeting in Boston in their office on December 20th, now that we've come up with a date that we think is, works for everyone. I called them back to reconfirm, and I know Wendy was working with different dates with them, to reconfirm and ask them if it was possible for us to bring Paul Jackson and Michael Leary with us in order to hear more and to, and also to listen to where they are. They thought that was fine and where, you know, so we expect that we'll be meeting and then discussing with all of you what we've heard. It is breaking new ground, there's no question about it. I think that what I'd like to say tonight is, if any of you have any questions, and I told the person at the School Building Assistance that we would be forwarding him questions in advance. And one of the questions that I had, that they really don't have an answer yet because it is so new, is what does the funding mean? The treasurer said in the Globe that for the repair assessment schools, there's possible funding in the spring.
Right.
And I'm not sure what that means at this point in time. I'm not sure if they're going to look at staging this over time and looking at the roof and looking at asbestos abatement and looking at windows and looking at HVAC, or are they going to say, we want to see your whole plan and then, but at that point in time, we have to work with the municipal side, the advisory committee, the public in order to state our case. But we don't know what that case is yet. So I think it's important for people to understand that, but just to be on this first list is terrific, as I've talked to some of you just privately over the last few days. And to be able, within hopefully four or five years, to be able to say, we now have a state-of-the-art high school and a state-of-the-art middle school, and one of our elementary schools have been, has been recently renovated in the last 10 years or so, and then looking at our other schools, which are in very good shape. To be able to have that kind of infrastructure, again, separates us from many communities that just don't have that. So I'm very excited about this.
The article that was in the Globe yesterday that referred to now the 18 schools...
That was the South Weekly, though.
Right, right. Well, the first, no, the first time it said 27 schools. And yesterday, in the South Weekly, it said one of 18, and I was like shocked when you went down alphabetically. And then we were right in the middle, it's like, wow. You know, so really...
118 now?
Well, it's, I think the South Weekly just looks at the South, the South section of...
So we're really one in 23. We should consider...
I think one in 27.
One in 27 in this repair group. And, but it sounded, sounded to me like this was a very important area for the state to be looking at, and that is really terrific news.
Comments from anyone else on the committee on that?
Thank you for all that work.
Larry, now you've taken the time to thank Paul and Mike, and I really would like to thank you, because at the time, I'd asked you to jump in on this. And you're an important asset to this committee, and I want people to understand that, you know, you do jump in whenever we ask you to. And you were a big part of that process, and I really would like to personally thank you, because no matter what we ask you to do, you do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to other matters.
Chris, we'd like to go first.
Sure, I have a few that I'd like to just make sure people know. Something that I know all of you read in the Foxborough Reporter was, and I'd just like to make the public announcement, we can discuss whether we want to bring the students or not to a future meeting. But we have identified 57 of our seniors qualified for the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship based on their performance on the spring 2006 Grade 10 MCAS test. These students scored in the advanced category in either mathematics or the English Language Arts section of the Grade 10 test, and scored in the proficient or advanced category in the second subject. These students' combined MCAS scores on these assessments have ranked them in the top 25 percent at the Foxborough Public Schools at Foxborough High School. Purpose of the Adams Scholarship is to reward, is to reward and inspire student achievement, help attract more high-performing students, and this is directly tied to Massachusetts' public higher education. It's a tuition, it's a free tuition program, actually, and provide families of college bound students with financial assistance. So we're very pleased that 57 of our students have achieved that. Just a couple of quick updates on security. I'm waiting to hear from the Metrolet people. I know that they've taken all of our plans for here at the high school and the Ahern School, so I'm waiting to hear from them. I expect to hear from them in the next week or so, and I'll offer an update to the committee about that status. We're very pleased that they're moving that process along and identifying the buildings and really analyzing them closely from a, from a safety standpoint. I have heard, and I don't know how much you have heard, I've heard very, very strong feedback from parents and staff about ConnectEd. And we're continuing to work on the data. Last Wednesday, we had ConnectEd trainer training all of our principals, so we're bringing it from the superintendent level to the school level. It's a very powerful tool, and I think it's, I think the initial reaction has been very good. I talked to Chief O'Leary, I think he feels the same way about ConnectCTY as well. And I think we've just started to figure out what the best applications are based on what our needs are. Again, I think my next discussion with the principals at our next administrators' meeting is, it's easy to overuse because it's so easy to use, and I want people to be careful about the messages that we send out. So I've had even a couple of teachers today have mentioned, what if we were, was I worried about the weather this morning? I'm a superintendent, we always worry about the weather in the morning. And would I have called them and how would they? And they said that they heard my first message, and as you did, I said, hi, this is Chris Minus, the superintendent of schools, and many people said, hi, Chris. Which was great. Unfortunately, it was pre-recorded, and I didn't know they were doing it, but many people have admitted, which is nice to hear.
The Memorex commercial.
So it's been a good tool. I think people are really getting it, and we'll continue to refine it. It's also good for our data. The next one is really, some of you may have seen, if you buy the central office, we are no longer worried about sliding into the baseball field without cars. It's all completed and finished. It looks very good, the curbing, the curbing looks very, very good. They did a terrific job. Same group that was out, some of you may have come around and seen what's taken place at the tennis court out here. We've really, I think they've really done some good work with that. We really, I think they've really done some good work with that. And finally, as I mentioned and announced that Cindy Brunelli is retiring, I'm thinking now about a very similar type of search that we ran when we hired our assistant superintendent, Debbie Spinelli. So I'll articulate that at the next meeting, but don't be surprised if there's an ad in the Globe. I want to get ahead of this, and I'm starting to see some administrative openings from around the state. We'll also use our online through MASC and MASSS, and some of our other, Masvo has an online Personnel Education Week. We'll stretch this nationally for our search. So I'll talk about a search as part of our process next week, when we
Okay.
But we're, we're going to get, just so that you know, we're going to get started right away. Typically, we would advertise for about a month, so putting it in the newspaper this Sunday would get that process started, would take us into January, more mid-January, and then we'd do the search process, and I'll talk more about it.
Well, Chris, I do, I want to just acknowledge how much I appreciate you updating us on a number of older items. You know, people can sit there and say, oh, they must have forgot about security, they must have forgot about these things, and I know you haven't. And so coming back to the committee on a regular basis and proactively sharing with people the statuses of these, it demonstrates not only your leadership, but I think the leadership on the school committee to keep on top of these items, and I think that's important. Martha, do you have anything on other business? Katie?
No.
Kate?
Just a question. Was there any change or anything happening with the signage and highway markings for the charter school? Have you heard anything? You were going to talk with Selectmen?
Yeah, the Selectmen are trying to meet with the, the police department to try to figure out, and hopefully we'll have an update for the next meeting to give you.
Thank you for doing that.
Oh, that's a good
I think that's, I think that's so important. And Larry, I like what you had said, it got captured in the, not only here at the meeting, but at the, in the Foxborough Reporter, and I think keeping the pressure on. I was appalled to hear that we were, that the, that Mass Highway Department has turned the town down, and maybe now with, with the pressure that you can exert on the Selectmen, that will, that will
We had to think someone's going to get hit before they're going to respond.
Right.
It is dangerous.
Well, it's oftentimes, you get several accidents before we get our lights in where we need them, and students killed and things.
The only other thing, if I may, I would just like to personally thank the Foxborough Lions. They have been a wonderful resource for this town, so many community groups, booster groups, with their fundraising effort. As you know, the Lions do a town-wide bottle-and-can drive. We have been very blessed at the high school. Over the last couple of years, they've actually made the effort to make sure that our various athletic teams got an opportunity if there was need. And just this past Saturday, our boys' basketball team conducted with the Lions a bottle-and-can drive, which was, they're just so very supportive, and it means so much. Sandwiched in between all the other sports, basketball sometimes feels very left out. So that was wonderful, the Lions. And the Lions will also be doing the girls' tennis, a town-wide bottle-and-can drive in February 9th, and then they will do a cheerleading bottle-and-can drive April 5th. So again, my hat off to the Foxborough Lions. They never get the publicity, but we want them to know how much we appreciate what they're doing and how this has helped our, our various sports teams and, and, and other groups.
Excellent. Thank you. Bev, do you have anything?
Yes, I would like to remind and invite everybody to come to the first wonderful concert of our concert series at Foxborough High School at 7:00, the holiday concert. We all go to see the students, but we will also see and hear our brand-new
Instruments.
Instruments.
Thursday.
Thursday at 7:00 at the high school, yes. 150 students will be performing. So it's like, you shouldn't miss it. Deal.
Right. Anything else, Bev?
That's it.
Just one thing for the committee. I did get a call from the president of, I may get the name wrong, but our Cable Access Group.
Mike Klepper.
No.
Oh.
The president of the
Oh, the president of the group.
And, and she was explaining to me the eviction notice that they received to vacate their building, and, and they would like to come before the school committee and talk to us about some thoughts they have. It does not look as though the, the building that was going to, that the Selectmen were trying to get for them down at the old state hospital is going to work, and they have some thoughts about building a, an addition to the high school, and they would like to talk to the school committee about putting an addition. They, as you know, they do so much work for our schools, and they thought that the most convenient thing for them would be to be more closely attached to the school, and if they have to build a building or lease a building, they're trying to figure out, it probably is cheaper to build it than to lease it, and if they were to build it, is there a way to do it in conjunction with the schools? So I told her that I would invite her and her board, or whoever she wanted to bring, on the agenda for the next meeting, and they could update us on kind of where that stands, and that the school committee could then share with them their interest in whether or not we would be willing to explore with them the opportunity at their expense, putting on a small addition to the high school, which would house their organization, their studios, et cetera. So I just wanted the committee to be aware of that. Bev, you had two minutes you wanted?